Okay, I'd like to go ahead and get our Leighton City Council meeting started for November 6. I appreciate everyone who's here in attendance, and I want to acknowledge some scouts out there. Thank you very much for attending our meeting. As customary, we like to start all of our meetings with a prayer and a pledge, and this month it will be conducted by Councilmember Thomas. So I'll turn the time over to you.
That, Thomas?
I'll give a prayer, then we'll get up and have the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be gathered here as city members, as city councils, as a mayor, for those who need to try and keep order in the city, to do things which make things work right. We pray that we may have the wisdom, pray that we may look at things in the right way, that we may do the things that are helpful for the city. We ask thy blessings, that they might be upon us to do this, and this we say in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, Councilman Thomas. Council, we have four sets of minutes that needs to be approved, so I'd look for a motion, and if you could, go ahead and state those, unless there are any corrections.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from the Leighton City Council Work Meeting, May 1, 2025, Leighton City Council Work Meeting, June 5, 2025, Leighton City Council Meeting, June 5, 2025, and the Leighton City Council Work Meeting, June 19, 2025.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we adopt the minutes as written. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to our municipal announcements event, so I'll turn the time over to the council for any events they might be aware of.
Thank you, Mayor. Parks and Rec Department has a lot of activities going on. As you know, we're going into the holiday season, so one that's a little ways out, but the end of this month, November 24, the evening, we will be having the holiday lighting ceremony. So the lights out here in Constitution Circle are always looked forward to by the community and outside of our community as well. We see a lot of people coming from around the county and the area. That'll happen from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here, I believe, at Constitution Circle. So it'd be the large...
New pavilion?
Pavilion, thank you. Words are tough sometimes. So again, November 21st, or November 24, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This Saturday, just a couple days away, November 8, we will be celebrating Veterans Day with our Veterans Day Parade and Honor Ceremony, starting at 11:00, 11:00 a.m., and with the ceremony around 11:00. The parade will start at 11:00, 11:00 a.m. The ceremony at the Vietnam Wall will be at 12:30 p.m. So come out, and you can see the route on the city's website in the Parks and Rec Department. A couple of things happening at the Leighton Heritage Museum. First of all, November 12 will be the Turkey Trot, children, for ages two to five, with a guardian. I mean, don't just drop them off, please. That'll be, again, November 12, $10 per child, and be fun Thanksgiving activity at the museum. Also happening right now at the museum is a traveling exhibit titled "The Pen is Mightier: Writing a Revolution." So part of America's 250 celebration coming up next year, just showcasing how communication over 250 years ago helped to, helped us experience independence as America. So go to the museum. That exhibit is open now and going through into January. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. We are fortunate enough that the state recognized that our museum was one that they definitely wanted to put this exhibit in on behalf of all of Davis County, but then also for the surrounding areas. So hats off to our museum curator and the commissioner. So did you have some announcements?
Is the 22nd Turkey Day bowling?
That's this Saturday.
Okay.
Which we will be bowling.
Yeah, last I checked, but is there a waiting list?
It's all filled.
Yeah, I believe that's all filled, so filled up quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. So on behalf of the Leighton Communities That Care, we will have a table booth at the New Ames Night of Hope. New Ames is one of the high schools that's here in Leighton that's housed at the Weber State-Davis Campus, in the Stewart Center Ballroom on Wednesday, November 19, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And this is an event where parents and students are invited to attend a mental health presentation. They'll focus on building resilience, fostering hope, and supporting mental health well-being. And so we invite you to come out to New Ames Night of Hope and visit your Leighton Communities That Care table. Also, a couple of weeks ago, I was at an event with the Clearfield City Council folks and was handed a flyer that there is a food drive, ongoing food drive, for the Hill Air Force Base Airmen's Attic. And this is something that our community is working to help military families who are currently, many of them are working and are not getting paid. And so they are asking for canned and boxed food items, diapers, baby food formula, and household items. And you can drop any of those items off to Clearfield City Hall from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, or at the True by Hilton, which is just located right outside of the Air Force Base, and they are accepting donations at that location 24/7. So this is just something to help our military family and friends who are in our area, and that's going to support the Airmen's Attic. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. So in addition to that, as part of what Councilmember Roberts spoke about, America 250, currently at our swimming pool, we are exercising an additional food drive, and it's in acknowledgement of America 250, but more importantly, knowing the important needs currently for, as stated earlier, the military family. So, I mean, you can see that collectively as cities around here, we do care about those that are serving and the predicament they're in, and we all want to contribute. But if you would like to bring some canned goods or whatever, please bring them to the Leighton Surf and Swim. There is a bin there already for you to drop these items off. And I personally think that with it being 250, it would be great if we collect at least 250 cans a week, if not more. So with that, I encourage all of our residents to help out. And certainly, if anybody's in the military that's in those type of situations and can't afford to take care of their living expenses, meaning the utilities and that, this is something that Leighton City has done over the past several years. It isn't new, but certainly let our folks know, and we will do what we can to work with you to make sure that you can keep your utilities on. So, any other announcements that you guys have? We have one more announcement. What I'd do is encourage anyone who's here at City Hall, please read the poster out there as far as our interfaith concert. That's generally the Sunday...
Sunday.
The Sunday before Thanksgiving, which is the 16th, and this year it will be down at the new Western Sports Park in Farmington. So, and it's a free concert, and it's put on by the interfaith council that's certainly, you know, we've got the majority of the folks here within the city that will be performing. And for those that attend, a lot of the faith-based organizations that we have within our boundaries, but this year the performance will be down there, so we encourage everyone to attend. And we'll also be doing a special nativity lighting scene the same night as our park. So we'll work collectively with that. With the changes, with the Leighton High School being under construction, you know, they've had to bounce around, but that's where they're at this year. Okay, I think that takes care of all of our municipal announcements. I'll now go on to our verbal petition or presentations. You do not see anything on the agenda, however, I'm going to exercise a point of privilege here and acknowledge the fact that the elections were just this week, and while I'm very excited to be able to continue to serve as a mayor, and I want to congratulate Councilmember Smith Edmondson also on her winnings there as well, her election. But unfortunately, we're going to be losing one of our council members, and we'll do a special presentation as we get closer to the end of his term. But I recalled a comment that he had made back when we were having to deal with some of the tree removal that had to take place within our city, and he was pretty emotional about a tree that he had to remove in his yard that was a descendant from your great-grandfather, the walnut tree. Is that correct, Tyson?
Yes.
Okay, so Tyson, I remembered that, and being that I have one, I live in one of the historical homes that is part of that whole descendant, I have a black walnut tree that is very old, and I'm sure it was probably, most likely, older than yours. So I want you to know, I took the nuts, I planted the tree. We are now into the fall. This is the beginning of that tree, so you now have a new tree to plant in your yard that is a representation of that, and I felt like I needed to give it to you now because otherwise it would look like a toothpick, because just today, all of these leaves fell off. So I want to basically pass this on to Tyson so that he can plant it in his yard.
Thank you, Mayor. Didn't plan on getting emotional for a couple more weeks, but wow, that's incredible. Thank you. Means a lot.
At least you don't need a tractor.
Well, and I was surprised that I actually was able to nurture it and have that, grow that from a nut from that tree. So anyway. Okay, we'll go ahead and go on to our citizens' comment portion of our meeting. This is the time that we'll turn it over to anyone who would like to address this governing body. So if you'd like to, please come up to the podium here and state your name and just what city you're from, and then go ahead and let us know what you're thinking.
It's like I never leave.
I would have loved to have been in the work meeting today, but I was down at the Department of, let's see, Utah Department of Natural Resources for that House Bill 48 meeting, which, may the odds be in your favor, I don't think Leighton's going to have to deal with that too much. But that being said, it sounds like dog parks were on the agenda, which is why I would love to have been there. But it also sounds like maybe we're making a few steps in the right direction. So I'm just going to stand here and say thank you. Congratulations, Bettina. I voted for you. Congratulations, Joy. I voted for you.
Thank you.
And I'm just thankful. I'm thankful for everybody that's on the city council that puts in the hours, because, again, I've said this time and time again, I know it's a thankless job, and often all you hear is the negative. So I'm thankful for the work that you put in, and I'm incredibly thankful for the steps we're taking forward on a potential dog park. So we appreciate you guys.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, but we didn't catch your name, even though you've been here many times. I need you to state your city.
Yes, ma'am. Jennifer Bizzano, Leighton.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, is there anyone else?
I did get to attend the work meeting, and first of all, I was overwhelmed with everything you guys have to deal with and how hard you worked for us in that. So it would be really good for people to come to those work meetings, because it did make me appreciate everything you guys do. And congratulations, and congratulations. I did vote for both of you as well.
Thank you.
It was really exciting to see what you said about the dog park. Being the largest city in Leighton, it'd be nice to be able to not have to leave the city to take my dog to the dog park. And what you're proposing is beautiful, and I really appreciate the work you guys have put into it. So thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Terri Stevens, and I live in Leighton.
Thank you, Terri. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing that there's no other comments, then I'd like to go on to our consent items tonight. We have three items that are on the agenda, and as I always state, we do not need to vote on them independently, but we can vote on them collectively. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Steve Jackson to deal with item number A.
Mayor, Council, it's good to be with you tonight. For your consideration is Amendment Number One of the Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between Leighton City and Davis County for Transportation Project Reimbursement. This project is for a traffic signal at Main Street at the front-runner station. We've been working on that for quite a while. As you see, the new development that's taking place at Leighton Station, and then also Joel and in the Parks Department are working on a pedestrian overpass over the railroad tracks to the west. We've reached the end of the timeline on that agreement, and Davis County has graciously allowed us to extend that until March, or excuse me, June 30 of 2026. We anticipate it won't take that long to get this put in, but just wanted to formalize that in this amendment to that agreement. So staff recommends that council adopt Resolution 25-50 and authorize the mayor to execute this amendment to the agreement. Is there any questions I can answer for anybody?
Any questions, Council?
I will note, all of the underground improvements are in. It literally is just standing up the traffic signal as soon as we get authorization from UDA and putting power to it. So it's almost there.
Yeah, no, I think that development's turned out very nicely for that area. Do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, will there be any special arrangement for pedestrians there? So that's going to be part of the trail system or just a normal crosswalk?
It'll be a full crosswalk, but yeah, we're working with Joel and, and as soon as that pedestrian overpass goes in, we'll make sure we're evaluating those signal timings to make sure pedestrians have adequate time to get across.
But it'll just be a...
Yeah, it'll be a regular cross signal. All four intersection, or four legs of the intersection will have crosswalks at them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question. Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and move on then to item number B, which Mr. Jackson will go ahead and present that item as well.
Yes, thank you. For your consideration, Resolution 25-51 is a bid award to Institute Reform Technologies. We do business with them as Twin D. They storm drain cleaning and televising project that we have. In the map here, it's the area west of Main Street, north of Gordon Avenue, areas 49 and 51 in the city. The project includes televising and cleaning storm drain lines from anywhere from 12 inches to 48 inches in diameter, with the contract for this '25-'26 fiscal year with possible one-year extensions based on performance. We received three bids, with Twin D submitting the lowest responsive responsible bid in the amount of $153,174.88, with an engineer's estimate of $156,866.22. Staff recommends the council adopt Resolution 25-51 and award the bid to Twin D, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement for the storm drain televising and cleaning project 25-20. Any questions I can answer on that?
Any questions? Yes.
I just have one question. Maybe it's about process. Could you lay out briefly for us and also for the audience what the process is for getting bids in the city with different projects specifically like this one?
Yeah, so we actually use a website called Quest CDN. Our staff in the engineering department prepares the bid documents for that. They prepare the maps. This is just one map in that document. Once the bid documents and the maps are prepared after the budget has been approved, then we post that to the website. Any contractors that would like to bid have access to the information. It's posted to the city's website and the Quest CDN. We give them a certain amount of time. It's very clear in the document and then on the website how they enter those bids. We have an electronic bidding process in engineering where we then open the bids electronically, click of a button, and it shows the bids. Then we read them aloud over a Zoom meeting so that we don't make everybody come in from wherever they are. We actually had some out-of-state bids this time. And then at that point, we process the paperwork, bring it to you as the council to award and approve. So, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Steve. We appreciate that. Let's go ahead and move on to item number C, and Weston Appoloni will be presenting this item to us, which is an amendment plat. Amended.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is the Taggart Subdivision First Amendment Plat. It is located in an area that's surrounded by R-18, single-family, and RM-1, which is low-medium residential. The property, just the quick and dirty of it, this red section here, you can see the fence line of the property. This is what we're doing. The property line is really just a, the adjustment here is adjusting to where the fence is, basically functioning how the property is already being used. On October 14, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the Taggart Subdivision First Amendment, subject to meeting all city requirements as outlined in staff memorandum. Staff supports the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Be happy to answer any questions you have on this.
The only question I have is knowing how close that roof line is to the boundary. Hopefully, it does meet our setbacks, Sam?
It does meet our setbacks.
Okay. Any questions, Council?
None.
Quick and easy. Thank you. Okay, Council, that then brings, that was our last item on our consent items, so it brings it back to you for action. If you could state the resolution number or the, what am I trying to say? What the information is? So item number C, state that one out.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 25-50, Resolution 25-51, and the amended plat for the Taggart Subdivision, first amended.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our consent items. We'll now move on to item number six, which is our public hearing. We have one item on the agenda at this time. So what we'll do is have, once again, Mr. Appoloni present this item to us, and then we'll bring it back to the council.
Thank you again, Mayor. During the 2025 Utah Legislative Session, Senate Bill 104 was passed, which amended the Municipal Land Use Development and Management Act, which is often referred to as LUDMA. This is the state's land use guidelines and requirements. What it did is revised terminology and processes for modifying property line, boundaries, and lotline adjustments. Our processes don't change based on what the state is asking us to do, just terminology changes. I'll go through those changes, and then as a part of this amendment, staff is making a recommendation for a minor change as well. The state is requesting three specific functions, three specific terms to be used. One is a boundary establishment. This is used when a boundary line adjoins a property and is ambiguous or uncertain. There potentially could be a dispute on the property line. This is to be worked out through the property owners and then recorded at the county. The city already addresses it and handles it this way. There is the simple boundary adjustments. This is used in either a subdivision or outside a subdivision where there are not public utility easements that are, that need to be vacated. This is reviewed and approved administratively, so they'd still have to submit an application. City staff would review it, make sure it does meet setbacks and any other standards that are required for it to meet, and then it could get recorded at the county. And then there's the full boundary adjustments. This is what we just reviewed just a couple minutes ago. It's an administrative process. When a full boundary comes through, the city requires it to be a plat amendment. That plat amendment vacates any existing utility easements and then reestablishes them with the plat. And then as well a part of this, with the two motions that are tied to this, the second motion will be to remove the engineering and development guideline standards that are also regulating lotline adjustments, which, because they will all be in the municipal code instead. What you see here in front of you is the table that, in our municipal code, that outlines the reviewing body and the land use authority for these specific categories. One of the things that we identified as we were going through this is that vacating of plats and amending a plat is really the same process and kind of a hybrid process between the preliminary and the final plat process. When we go through a preliminary plat, we are establishing property lines and establishing public utility easements, and when we vacate and amend the plat, we're doing the same process. And so the intent here is to match that procedure, and it's an administrative process. So although that hand was, or that was reviewed in the Planning Commission to begin with, staff's recommending that that goes back to the Planning Commission, that the city council doesn't have to review that. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
Oh, actually, let me just say, and I apologize for not saying this, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission. They do not review the engineering standards, and so they just reviewed the motion on Section 1801-070 and 1804, 1804-010, and 1832, which is the municipal code section, and they recommended unanimously to approve this. And then, again, the engineering section is reviewed and approved by the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Weston. Council, do you have any questions before we open it up for public comment? If not, I do need a motion to open up the public comment.
I guess I make a motion, we open it up to public comment?
Okay.
Do we have to just wave goodbye?
Okay, so if there's anyone that wishes to come up and address us regarding the amendment that was presented to us and the change there on how, what the process is, please, once again, come up to the mic, state your name, what city you're from, and then express your opinion here. Okay, being that there's none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. Council, do you have any further discussion on this or questions? If so, please address it now, otherwise I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing and take action on item number A of our public hearing.
It's a long one.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and we approve ordinances 25-22 and 25-23.
Excellent. That was an excellent way to do that. Okay, it's been moved in second. I'll now go ahead and take a vote on this. Let's go ahead and start down here with Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloxham?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith Edmondson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Okay, there you have it. It passes unanimously. And that is the last item on our agenda for this evening. However, we do have one, two items that we do need to go back into a closed-door meeting for, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn our regularly scheduled council meeting and go into a quick closed-door meeting. go into a quick closed-door meeting.
I move we adjourn this meeting to go into a closed meeting.
Thank you. I'll acknowledge that. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, and I hope you have a safe...
Wait, is there not a time for public comment?
Yeah, that was at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, I guess I missed one.
You're welcome to come back next time, in two weeks.
Okay, in two weeks.
Okay.
It's at the beginning of the...
Yeah, okay. And with that, I just once again want to encourage everyone to come out this Saturday to support our veterans and acknowledge our Veterans Day Parade at 11:11 with the program at 11:30, or 12:30 at the wall. So thank you.
Mayor, just real quick. The motion.
Been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you for the correction. Okay, thank you.